This May 16th, 2024, meeting of the Dublin City Council is called to order. I would ask for Councilman Benny Jones to provide the invocation. Please remain standing for the pledge to the flag. Mr. Jones.
By his name and following, just thanking for this day that you've given us, Lord, been our protection, been our guide all day long, and in hurt, harm, and danger coming for us, Lord. We thank you for this meeting, Lord. I pray, Lord, to give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. We make decisions, Lord, continue, Lord, unite in this city and bring us together, Lord, and continue, Lord, to bless this city, Lord, and even other blessings, rest in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We are going to begin with item number one on our agenda, which is approval of the May 1st City Council meeting minutes. A copy of those minutes has been provided in your packet. Are there any questions for staff regarding the minutes? If none, do we have a motion?
Most still approved.
So we have a motion from Councilman Jones. Do we have a second? A second from Councilman Brown. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number two, which is approval of bills over $15,000. Mr. Powell.
Council has a copy of all the bills from the last, since the last meeting in your packet.
Any questions regarding those bills? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to pay bills.
We have a motion to approve the bills from Councilman Smith, a second from Councilman Jones. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number three, approval of purchases over $15,000. Mr. Powell.
We have one purchase for council's consideration tonight. As the council knows and the public's aware, as we do renovations at Hillburn Park, part of our Parks Master Plan, it's going to involve the demolition and reconstruction of the pickleball courts that are currently there now because of the status of the concrete surfaces there. And so to alleviate that, and if anybody's been by in the evenings in particular, they're highly popular and there's usually a large crowd waiting to play pickleball. We have been in contact with Middle Georgia State University about the idea of converting their tennis courts on their campus here in Dublin to pickleball courts. And they are excited about that and would like to partner with the city to do that. And so what staff's asking for council tonight, we did get a couple of quotes to do that conversion, and the low quote was $46,000. The university has asked for us to make that contribution to their foundation, and they would pay for that as well as the lighting that's needed for that court and make it available to the public at large. And so that, if we can get that done, before we do the demo at Hillburn, we'll have saved and have a place for pickleball for those people who are playing. And then also provide additional amenity in the community. So we're asking for council to approve the disbursement of $46,000 to Middle Georgia State University's foundation for that purpose.
All right. Are there any other purchases over $15,000?
That's the only one.
All right. Do we have any questions?
I have one question about that. Are they, I know we had, did we convert that gym at Moore Street to an indoor pickleball court? Is that still being used or not being used?
The city schools did that, I believe. I don't think the city actually did that work.
So that's not available to the public?
You want me to speak to that?
Please, because I don't know.
Yeah. So the, what happened was that Moore Street Gym was being used for storage. The city provided space for the city school system to move their stuff out of storage into the, I believe, into the gas department.
Correct.
The school system then paid to convert that gym, or the floor of that gym, into, I believe, three courts. And then those courts are accessible to the public via the Dublin Pickleball Association that has a key card entry system.
Okay.
So that they can know who's going in and out of that system.
Okay. Gotcha. Just, okay.
Yeah. So anybody who wants access to it, you just contact the Dublin Pickleball Association. You can purchase a key card for entry.
But this will be for six courts?
Correct.
What we're doing.
And open to the general public.
And open to the general public. And they're, they've done this, Middle Georgia has done this at their Macon and Cochrane Campus, and it's been wildly successful for them. And they have it open until 1:00 a.m., so it'll be open for quite a while to the public.
All right. Any other questions? If there are no other questions, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Smith. We have a second from Councilman Godfrey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number four, which is the first reading of an annexation ordinance. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance 2402, annexing and incorporating into the municipality of the city of Dublin, Georgia, a half an acre, more or less, of land located at parcel D04E015 as P Professional Zone. The proposed use is for a medical office. This is just off of Fairview Park Drive, and it is actually a parcel of land that is directly behind a medical office there. It's the third medical office on the right as you go down Fairview Park Drive, and they are wanting to expand their office. So this is just the first reading. The second reading will be at our June 6th council meeting here in the council chambers at 5:30.
All right. So again, this was a first reading, just notification to the public that this annexation has been requested. There will be a public hearing on this annexation request on Thursday, June 6th, at 5:30 p.m. After the public hearing, there will then likely be a vote taken. We'll now move to item number five on the agenda, the first reading of the 2025 operating budget for the city of Dublin ordinance. Again, this is the first reading of the ordinance. No action will be taken on this tonight, but this is the first reading. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance 2403, an ordinance by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to provide for the adoption of the fiscal year 2025 operating budget for the city of Dublin, to update the position and classification schedule for employees of the city, to set criteria for the city's retention incentive, to adopt a five-year capital improvement plan for the city, and to set an effective date and other lawful purposes. The total budget for the city for this year is $95,364,169 on both the revenue and expense side of those due balance. And then we have our five-year capital improvement plan attached, as well as the position and classification schedule as well.
All right. Thank you for that, Mr. Powell. I just want to thank the council members and the staff. We had a budget workshop here in council chambers, open to the public, was it last week or two weeks?
Last week.
Last week, and had full participation from the council. It was a very productive session, and I'm excited about this upcoming budget. And we want to be fully transparent with the public about what's in the budget. If anybody is interested in the details of it, that information is available here at City Hall, and we will have a public hearing on it at our next council meeting. We'll now move to item number six on the agenda, which is the first reading of an ordinance regarding the utility charges for the city of Dublin. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance number 2404, amending section 24-38, 24-39, and 24-72 of chapter 24 of the Code of Ordinances that's entitled Utilities for the City of Dublin, Georgia. This is, each year, the council and staff evaluate our water and sewer rates and make the determination of any increases that may be needed. This year, the increase is 20 cents per 1,000 gallons, both on the water and the sewer side. And so staff is recommending that this ordinance be approved. This is a first reading. The second reading will be at the June 6th council meeting as well.
Yeah. And I do want to just point out that these, the proposed increases are incredibly minimal. The minimum bill for a city resident would go under this ordinance from $24 to $24.80. So this is a, this is just a marginal increase in those sewer rates, water and sewer rates. We'll now move to, again, this was a first reading. There'll be opportunity for a public comment, and the vote on this will be at the next council meeting on June the 6th. We'll now move to item number seven on the agenda, which is action on a memorandum of understanding with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs regarding our downtown program. Mr. Powell.
This is resolution 2419, a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to accept and approve the terms of a memorandum of understanding with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, Office of Downtown Development, the local Main Street Program Board of Directors, and the Downtown Manager of Dublin to maintain the city's, the city's Georgia exceptional Main Street, excuse me, the Georgia's classic Main Street designation, to authorize the mayor to execute the same, set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. Each year, we enter into a MOU with DCA and our Downtown Development Authority for our designation as a classic Main Street, which is a designation that DCA gives us. It, this agreement outlines the terms of what we are required to do as a local Main Street to maintain that status, as well as what services and benefits DCA provides to us. And so staff recommends that you approve this resolution.
All right. And just, just for review, what council is, is agreeing to do in this memorandum of understanding is to make sure that our downtown program has a full-time downtown manager, that we have established boundaries for where the program will operate, and that the city will provide financial support to the downtown program. And all of this, we've been doing for close to 40 years?
Yeah.
Yeah, long, 30, 30-something years. So are there any questions for staff regarding this MOU? If not, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Brown and a second from Councilman Jones. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number 10 on the agenda, which is a resolution approving an agreement with Charter Communications for the Madison Street Project. Mr. Powell.
Eight, nine.
Eight, nine.
Eight, nine.
George Power.
Ah, sorry, I skipped a page. All right. So we're now at item number eight. Yeah, I did skip a page. Sorry about that. We're at item number eight, which is a resolution regarding an agreement with Georgia Power regarding the Madison Street Project. Mr. Powell.
This is resolution 2420, a resolution of the city of Dublin, Georgia, by and through its mayor and council to approve an agreement with Georgia Power Company for the installation and maintenance of streetlights along a portion of Madison Street to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same, set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. This agreement is for the installation of 16 lamppost-style lights along Madison Street from Church to Jefferson Street as a part of our Madison Street, Streetscape project. And the upfront cost for this is $139,750. The monthly cost thereafter for those lampposts, for those 16 lampposts will be $382.88 a month. This, Georgia Power will be responsible for these. If they get damaged, if there's any problems with them, they'll be replacing them. This covers that cost as well, as well as the power form. And that price is locked in for the city and won't change as long as those lights are standing and the city is going. So we ask that you approve the resolution so we can get that going.
All right. Do we have any questions for staff regarding this? If not, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Brown and a second from Councilman Godfrey to approve the agreement with Georgia Power Company. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
I should point out, too, that, yes, I was just going to say, the upfront cost is being paid for out of the grant that we received, the rural downtown redevelopment grant we received. The monthly cost will be paid for out of the general fund.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. We'll now move to item number nine on the agenda, which is a resolution establishing the 2024 residential and commercial garbage rates. Mr. Powell.
This is resolution 2419?
2421.
Well, I'm looking. I don't know if that's correct. Let me see. What's on the agenda may not be right, y'all.
You have the DCA agreement is 2419 on the agenda.
Okay. So then it should be 2421. 2421, a resolution of the city of Dublin, Georgia, by and through its mayor and council, establishing new residential and commercial garbage collection rates to amend any conflicting ordinance or resolution and establish an effective date. At the solid waste management of Lawrence County, has increased our rates by averaging about 13% from what we were paying previously. To accommodate for that, as well as the increased cost in running our sanitation department, staff is recommending an increase in the garbage rates. So the current residential roll cart rate will go from $25 to $29 a month. Commercial rates will be $35 to $39.95 a month. An additional roll cart will go from $10 to $18 for residential or 20 for commercial. And then dumpsters will increase from $468 per cubic yard to $542 per cubic yard, and then that'll be determined based on the size of the dumpster that you receive. These rates, staff has done a comparison to other sanitation service providers, and we feel that these are in line with what others are charging. I would point out, too, that the city also provides long debris, yard debris pickup at no additional charge, as well as, or that's incorporated in your roll cart fee, as well as we do free bulk pickup throughout the city, as long as it's within a four-by-eight square size for pickup. So the city's providing a very good service to its citizens. This is a minimal increase compared, considering the services that we're providing, and we ask that the council approve that.
All right. Any questions for staff regarding this resolution? If not, do we have a motion?
Most still approved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Jones, a second from Councilman Smith. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
I would also like to point, I'm sorry, that the water rates and the sanitation rates will not be effective until July. They'll take effect in July.
Okay. All right. Now we'll move to item number 10, which is the resolution regarding the agreement with Charter Communications. Mr. Powell.
So this is resolution 2422, a resolution of the city of Dublin, Georgia, by and through its mayor and council to approve an agreement with Charter Communications Operations, Communications Operating LLC for the deconstruction of aerial facilities and installation of underground fiber and coaxial services along a portion of Madison Street to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same, set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. The total cost of this is going to be, to the city, is going to be $72,653.24. The agreement with Charter, this is, again, a part of the Madison Street project that's being paid for out of the grant. But we entered into a similar agreement with Georgia Power to move their utilities underground. So everything else on that pole has also got to be moved underground. Charter has utilities on the power pole, and so they'll also be moving their utilities underground, and that's what this contract is for.
Okay. Any questions for staff regarding this resolution, this agreement? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Brown. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right. That wraps up our regular agenda for this evening, and we'll now move to citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens who would like to make comments this evening? Ms. Bloodworth. Good evening. Just everybody's benefit in case there are other comments. Heather is not here tonight, our clerk, Ms. Browning, is not here tonight, but our city treasurer, Blake Daniels, will be running the clock, so it's three minutes. And when you start, just please say your name and where you're from.
I'm Ray Bloodworth. I'm in Ward Four. Sunday night, we had an incident happen on East Garner Street. That happened about 10:30, I believe. Monday at 10:30, about 10:30 a.m., I'm riding in my car, and in the street, it was full of blood, a white sheet, and gloves throwed all over. I guess the victim's shoe was left, and I want to know who responsible for not cleaning it up, because that's 12 hours later. I saw an officer come, I think his name, Officer Evans. He came, and he kindly got a bag out of his car. He picked the sheet up, the gloves, and his shoe, and put it in the bag. I called Brenda Chang, she called Benny Jones. I guess he called chief and the water department. I called the water department, I even called you, Joshua Powell. I left a message. I couldn't get nobody. I mean, that's unacceptable, because 12 hours later, for an incident that happened on the street, and you have people traveling and blood all over the street, that's unacceptable. I mean, why didn't they complete that job? I want to know who responsible for that.
All right. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Bloodworth. Any other comments?
No. I just want to know who responsible for it and why it wasn't taken care of, because the young lady had to come out her door and see blood. I had to ride down the street and see blood and a white sheet that they covered up the body with and left on the streets. I mean, that's unacceptable.
All right. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
My name is Robin Dudley Williams. I live at 1206 Calvin Watson Street. I would like to thank Ms. Ray Bloodworth. I appreciate what you did for her and my community. I also, because she contacted the right people. On mother day, I went to sleep motorcycle car, going to town all over the community. My neighbor woke me up at 11 o'clock, to be exact, it occurred at 10:52, captured by my neighbor camera. My neighbor woke me up at 11 o'clock p.m., telling me that there were two bodies on the road. It took everything. They woke me up. I came before you all like you, because of the safety issue. That same neighbor, Ms. Sanitator, wasn't able to be here, but I thank her for standing with me for our community. We used to walk all over the South Side. We no longer can do that anymore, because we have to deal with all the here fat car, Victor doll, you name it, but it's the South Side. So what I'm asking you all, what are you going to do to prevent this from happening? I refer everyone you all. But I have to say this. It pointed out to me during the here crisis, that was morning, morning when that occurred, the individuals told me, everybody want feed breaker. Yes, they do. But everybody don't have two bodies laying in the road dead. I have, I have to feed for the person, the person who can no longer feed for themselves. I did not know Carissa Robinson, nor Mr. Anthony Fred. I don't know what their stature in life, but it doesn't matter, because I heard a lot of people say, but what were they doing walking at that time of night? One thing I do know, they didn't have the right to be mowed down like an animal and left there. So I stand before you all, and I'm asking again, what are you all going to do? Because it seems to me like every community throughout Dublin get the opportunity to get their feed breaker or get it beautified, but it's the South Side. The only time we are giving any attention, I'm sorry.
You can, you can finish your sentence there, and then we'll...
The only time we giving any attention, is when they put in the paper the million, $3.2 million for O'Connor, or $1.30, but it never come back into our community, but it's a thing like the resource goes to everybody. So I'm asking for E. Connor, I'm not even asking for Calvin Robinson, but please put some feed breaker, because I had the opportunity, I did not even know Mr. Anthony Fred's mother.
I'm sorry.
I did not even know her, her mother, but I had the opportunity to see the pain in her eyes. And again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
For the opportunity. I'm sorry for going over.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who is here to address the pedestrian issues? If you'll give me just one second, I would like to just respond to the comments that we've heard this evening. I think that something that, that this council has been very concerned about is the, the rise of traffic and speeding cars all throughout neighborhoods in Dublin. You know, we have about 16,000 people who live in Dublin, who sleep here at night, and then during the day, we have probably two to three times that many vehicles. And it does seem like our neighborhoods have been subjected to speeding cars and, and just an excess of cars going through the neighborhood that has made it unsafe at times for, for adults and especially children to, to walk in the neighborhoods and to ride their bikes in the neighborhoods and really enjoy the community that they live in. And I would say that for the past two years, we have had a dedicated effort to try to address that problem. We started the Project Slow Zone, which has not just speed cushions, but also narrowing the roads and using other traffic control devices to try to reduce the speed and volume of traffic in our neighborhoods. And though, that Project Slow Zone, I see that as something that's critical to the quality of life and the safety of people who live in our town. And we've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars, now should be approaching millions of dollars after this year, you know, because we've got more money in the budget for it for this upcoming year. It shows how important it is that we preserve the safety of our residential neighborhoods. And what happened this past weekend is a, is a terrible and tragic reminder of, of how important it is, this, this, this mission that we're on, to try to increase the safety of our neighborhoods. And so I just want you to know personally that this is something that, that we all care about, and that we have all been concerned about, and that we have all been taking action on, and trying to put all the resources that we can of the city into increasing the pedestrian safety and the safety of adults and children in our neighborhoods. And unfortunately, it wasn't enough to save the lives of, of those people this past weekend. But hopefully, if we continue on this effort, which I'm sure that we will, we will be able to make a difference and, and increase the safety, livability, and quality of life of people who live in every neighborhood. And, you know, as to the, the South Side itself, I know that that is something that I have heard in the past about the amount of resources in different neighborhoods in town. And I will say that as far as Project Slow Zone goes, we have been prioritizing the streets that have the biggest problems, regardless of what neighborhood they're in. And we have had speed cushions and other traffic control placed in the South Side neighborhood, in every neighborhood in town, including the South Side. Unfortunately, we hadn't gotten to Garner Street yet. It is something that we've spoken with our town planner about, and that is going to definitely be on the list of streets upcoming so that we can address that issue. So, you know, and then there's been tremendous other resources placed into all our neighborhoods. This upcoming budget has over $30 million of, of capital investment in our town, and a lot of that goes into improving our, our streets and our neighborhoods. So I just want you to know that I hear what you're saying, and I respect you for coming up here and, and making those comments and telling us, again, how important it is to make sure that we continue to prioritize these efforts. Are there any other council members who would like to address the, that issue this, this time?
I would like to share with everyone that Mr. Benny Jones, Councilman Benny Jones, did bring it up in our pre-council, and I think the city is listening. And we plan to do something with lighting on that side as well. So we are trying, and we do hear you. And you know I do care about you, so, thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Okay. Any other citizens' comments this evening?
I'm Vonda Morton, proud eighth-generation native of the sovereign state of Georgia and the occupied South. Since y'all have fallen prey to the massive indoctrination surrounding the pledge to the federal flag, and since a while back, I gave y'all a short history lesson on the origins of the pledge to the Georgia State flag, besides y'all might need a lesson on the origins of the pledge to the federal flag as well. It does not, contrary to what many may think, have its origins in the founding of the United States. It was not written by any of the founding fathers or their contemporaries. Nope. It was written in 1892 by Francis Bellamy, a socialist. Yeah, you heard me right. He was a socialist. And he even devised a salute for the flag to be used during his pledge. After reciting the words to the flag, the right arm was extended like this. Look familiar? Yeah. Well, the government decided in, in the 1940s with the involvement in World War II, that it did look too much like the Nazi salute. And so it was changed to placing the hand over the heart. By 1954, as an outgrowth of the Cold War, President Eisenhower, over the objections of Bellamy's daughter, encouraged Congress to add the words "under God" to the socialist pledge. And as for the republic mentioned in the pledge, the republic established by the United States founders died in 1865 at Appomattox. It was replaced by a federal tyranny that has only increased since in size and constitutional violations. So I'd say y'all's indoctrination is complete, given that y'all unthinkingly recite a pledge written by an avowed socialist, but refuse to pledge allegiance to the very state you call home, using a pledge... call home, using a pledge written by a native Georgia patriot. My loyalty, however, is to my state first. I pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag and to the principles to which it stands: wisdom, justice, moderation, and courage.
All right. Thank you for those comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to make comments this evening? Mr. Hall.
My name is John Hall. Live across the street at Captain Hardy Smith's house. I just have a couple of comments. The first one, I'd like to know an update on the sewer situation. Got the paper here, from February 20, February 6. Council puts a rush on sewer repair project. February 20th, city tries to ease sewer issues until repairs begin. I don't see anything being done. Have y'all moved on to other things? I see a lot of money being spent. We had the gas folks were out there, and my neighbor who had the stench of the sewer for years, asked me on Facebook, is that, are they gonna fix our, our sewer system here? I said, no, that's something else. So I'd like to know what the update on that is. The other thing, as far as city council meetings, I looked it up last night in the code. There was a city council meeting that was held at 10:30 in the morning here, the first of the month. What is the procedure for letting citizens know when a city council meeting has changed? I didn't see it in the code. Is that just up to the mayor, is what it looks like? As long as he informs the other city council members? Shouldn't there be like a 24 or 48-hour notice to the citizens that they can attend the city council meetings? I can just walk across the street. It's no big deal for me, but what about other folks? I didn't even know about it. Anyway, those are my comments.
All right. Thank you for those comments. This time I'd ask our city manager to provide an update on the Church Street Sewer Project.
So we've gotten the contract finalized with the contractor, and the pre-construction meeting is tomorrow. So they'll start, they'll notify us tomorrow when they can start on the project.
All right. And then I don't know if our city attorney, or if Mr. Powell, you want to address the, the public notice of meeting times?
We, we notify, I mean, we're required by law to notify the newspaper when our meetings are, and we do that, and they typically run and have, and the newspaper, what they do with that information is up to them, but they, they typically run an ad in the newspaper when our meetings are going to be. And the, yes, the mayor with the council approves the meeting times if they change, for whatever reason.
And, and, you know, it is an issue. I fully believe in maximum transparency of, of any kind of city business where you're dealing with city dollars or your city policy, anything like that. So I think that, I can't remember the exact reasons why we had to change that meeting time, but I think it had to do with the absence of staff on the Thursday and Friday, when we would have our normally scheduled meeting, so it had to be moved to a Wednesday, and then trying to get a quorum, we can't have a meeting unless we have at least four members available. So that 10:30 was the only time that we were able to establish a quorum. But whenever we do that, it's important to me that the, that, any, anything that's of major public interest or controversy, I want to be at a regularly scheduled meeting. I think that the items that were at that 10:30 meeting were, were relatively routine like the items of this, this meeting. So I hope that that addresses your comments. Do we have any other citizens' comments this evening?
I, I would just say too, I, I take note of what you're saying, and we can always do better about getting out the word when there's been a change, and we can use social media and postings here at the, at City Hall as well to help that, so we can do that in the future.
All right. If there are no other citizens' comments, Mr. Daniels, you have any comments? Mr. Groover?
Good to be with y'all.
All right, great. Councilman Brown?
Just thank everybody for being here, and your comments are, are well-taken. And as you can see by the comments made in response to that, we, we will address those. Thank you.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank everyone for coming out, and comments made, well-spoken, and they're not falling on deaf ear. We are listening, and we will do better. Also, make an announcement, this commensary they made at, I think it'll be the 18th, 18th, we're doing a pop-up library at the Catherine Gray Resource Center. Police, the police and fire department about to grill and hot dogs and hamburgers, and wanting the young, those, the children to come out. We have information to get them about a summer reading program at the library, so they hope they can sign up and get involved in that. And also, for the first 50 families that show up, 50 people that show up, there will be, um, foremost, we'll have vegetables and fruit be given out also on behalf of Mayor Group. So we only got enough for the first 50, 50 families, so after that, that's a cutoff. So I probably shouldn't be making that announcement.
I'm crushed.
But, yeah, but that'll be it. So come on out, and let's, um, support our young people and get them involved in summer reading, and help encourage them to get involved in summer reading and all. We just thank everyone for coming out, and y'all stay cool and stay blessed.
All right. Thanks for those comments. Councilman Godfrey?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind you all to remember tomorrow's the last day to early vote. Please don't forget to vote, or you can wait till later on.
Tuesday.
Oh, it's Tuesday? Okay. A Tuesday, but don't forget to vote. Also, I would like to, on a lighter note, say happy heavenly birthday to my grandfather, James Ellington, and one of my favorite cousins, Garyanna Ellington-Duty today. She turned 30 today, and I know she's still going through a lot, losing her favorite cousin on the Easter weekend, but we're just happy she's still around, and we're gonna love on her, and I just wish that you all would pray for my family. Thank you so much. And always, Sonia May, we love you so much. Sonia May, Kevin.
All right. Thank you for those comments. Councilman Godfrey? Councilman Smith?
Uh, just thank everyone for coming out, and I just want to thank y'all for coming up and speaking your truths about what the situation that happened. And just like Mr. Hall come and follow up all the time about the sewage problem, I hope that we can continue as a South Side community to come and continue to speak up, so we can get a rush on lighting in those dark places such as South Side Telfair, and get a rush on it, so we can prevent things like that from happening. I just, everyone stay safe. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. And I, I will say, I know that all our council members have been very persistent, and I know that Chris, you have about lighting around Telfair, and, and Benny is also in the South Side as well. So you, you guys have been on top of that, and I think that the, that we're trying to do everything we can to get that stuff installed, and we need to make sure it happens as, as fast as possible. Mr. Powell, any comments?
Just like to thank everyone for their comments. You know, without you guys coming and letting us know what's on your minds, well, we don't know as well, so thank you for, for coming and sharing your thoughts.
All right. That is all. Thank you for coming this evening. We are now adjourned.